It kind of falls under maintenance and utilities, so I mean, or projects. For the mics to enhance the system.
This is expenditure of money. I mean, it would be.
Right, but it sounds like, you know, somebody that knows audio visuals telling us that even if we add these lapel mics, the current system can't handle it, and it's just going to create more feedback popping than noise, so.
Because you're coming all the way up right now, right Sarah?
Well.
Pretty close.
All right, if we had lapel mics, they'd be able to turn that down some, right? Because we're not having to have it. So it picks up. Microphone thing right here.
I think that that system is old and it's not up to par.
I don't think you're ready to spend three grand whenever we're looking at a microphone for either this or.
Yeah, price of transparency though, you know? Because there's a lot of people trying to watch right now and they can't hear that. Mics will help, but it's not going to fix the problem.
Well, I think, go ahead, make, I'd say go ahead and make the motion if you want on the pelts and I'll second it, and then we can talk about, once again, it all comes down to the audits and how much money this town has. So let's, you know, get the ball in motion.
All right, I'll make a motion that we accept the lapel microphones. It's a hundred dollars over the other.
Ms. Adams? Mr. Rahas?
Yes.
Ms. Gellman?
Let me see, no.
Mr. Romero? Mr. Thornton?
I know it's kicking the can down the road a little bit, but until we get to finances where we know what's going on, we do have to let people hear us.
I have no idea.
A time card. A time card machine, I originally said fingerprint, I know that's unreasonable, but just regular time card machine. Because we really need the people who work in the office. We need, and that's a good way to record times for payroll, for accountants. That's a good record just to have.
Are we still talking, or is there a camera above the time card? Where would be?
There could be, there's a camera in there, but it should be, the time card machine should be where this, uh, under the camera.
Okay. I mean, time card, you know, time card machines, if you don't go super high-tech and fingerprint and stuff are relatively affordable.
They, they're cheap.
Can I ask something? Are these guys on salary? Because if they're on salary, time cards don't.
Right. I don't know.
Go ahead, Sarah.
Um, if we're going to get, um, time card, time card things or whatever for the office, are we also going to get for utilities? If they get a call out, they can end the library? They're all town employees.
But there's going to have to be exceptions to the time card machine, because if you're the one in charge in there, you can sign up on their time.
I'm just saying, I think, I mean, if you're going to do it for one, it should be done for all, so if there's one in the office.
I agree.
One in the shop and one at the library. Because we're all town employees.
Oh, I forgot about the library.
Yep. I agree.
I do too, Ms. Adams.
So motion for three time card, um, just need to, who's going to look into which ones we're going to buy?
Those special projects out of the month, I think they run like eighty dollars a piece.
Okay, so motion to get three, uh, time punch machines.
So she.
Ms. Uh, Ms. Adams?
Yes.
Mr. Rahas?
Yes.
Ms. Gellman?
Yes.
Mr. Romero?
Yes.
Mr. Thor.
Town clerk. This is the thing, and I know everyone was confused on the deal. Whenever I made a motion for Tyra as a town clerk, I didn't include administrator. I do know there was conversation between three of you about adding that to it, but my last words on that was I made my motion and that was on the town clerk. So the way the vote went, we did not appoint her as the administrator. I never amended my motion, and I'm no one who could do that. And it's real clear, if you listen to it, you thought, uh, Tyra and Donald got in the conversation about the, uh, yeah, the next, you guys had the, you know, the conversation, part of it was, were we going to vote them separate? And that's what Tyra and Donald came up with, yes, we're going to vote them separate. Then it came, what, the, the conversation was for me to add administrator. I was actually asked two or three times, and my last remark was, I made my motion. We voted for her as the town clerk, in my mind. So if there's confusion to it, you know, if, if you don't, I think the vote, they should stand on the vote, but if it was confusion, then we should just re-vote.
One of, one of the things, if you listen to the video, the way the mayors brought it up was, he said, town administrator and town clerk. But nobody made a motion for the town administrator. You know, they talked about it, but nobody made a motion. So the only real motion that was still on the floor is when Vern brought them.
That was town clerk only.
Yep.
Even the lawyers, they all had to be voted separate.
Yeah, I was looking for that one.
Mr. Thornton, you're going to make the second for a town clerk administrator?
Just town clerk.
Yeah, he seconded it twice on it.
We did twice, yeah. The second time he did, yeah. But the first time, it was only town clerk and the administrative clerk was added by Donald.
Okay, can we just make a motion to vote again?
Well, it, technically, you're supposed to do it at the, within thirty days or beyond the thirty days. But ordinance two sixty-six is coming up here. It'll have to do with this.
So we're going to pass on?
Well, we need to go through the other ordinance before we do anything on it.
The table clerk right now?
Got a question? Why are you tabling something that has already been motioned, seconded, and voted on?
There's a reason.
Is there a reason?
You'll question.
Thank you.
Okay, um, two sixty-six.
I have been going over two sixty-six, and there is a lot of different items in there that are not being adhered to by town administrator. And what good is it if they're not being followed? If you had a copy of two sixty-six, this is, you could, well, you can have this, look at it, see everything that's in yellow. It'll tell you stuff that the administrator should be doing and is not.
I've got an extra copy of two sixty-six if somebody needs one.
I thought I was going to get the job descriptions.
I, I asked for that a long time, but I never could see it. The job description and job time.
Who is table for the next meeting and the next meeting?
Never brought it.
Yeah, that's what happens, it's table that never.
Table will not up, brought it up again.
The very first thing that I think should be looked at is F.
Director report. Town administrator shall report directly to and be responsible to the board of trustees.
Isn't that lacking in that area? The other one is number two, under duties and authority.
Uh, which is under I.
To be responsible.
Oh, under number two.
Yes.
To be responsible to the board of trustees for the efficient administration of all town departments.
And the next one is number four.
To superintendent generally manage all town personal property, including but not limited to town-owned leased or used appliances, vehicles, and equipment, assuring the personal property is properly maintained, ready for service, and appropriately scheduled for replacement. That one?
Some of the equipment that we have isn't, wasn't properly maintained and available for use. We're waiting for one.
Okay, I'm going to go to number six. To prepare and submit to the board of trustees at each regular meeting such reports as the board of trustees may require.
Okay, so, tell me if I'm wrong, these all sound great, but right now, our biggest concern is, who is our town clerk?
Our town administrator.
Our town administrator. Who, who, I mean, who's, who is sitting in that position right now?
Well, the default is Sarah.
Well, until she is fully trained, I mean, we're, she's kind of like.
Well, no, no, no. What is happening?
No, I understand that. I understand what you're saying, which we're going over. But I'm just saying, you know, it's, it's kind of hard to, and I, I understand this is what needs to be done and what, you know, what they need to follow. But right now, we're kind of, we're that one.
And which all comes back down to, where's the paperwork on Tyra's leave? Was she on official leave or not?
We didn't reappoint her, so we should rescind the whole thing and start fresh with it.
A new appointment?
Uh, well, if the town decides to have an administrator, that position looks like, it looks like it puts a lot of duties on Tyra, that she's got too much anyway. A lot of those things are things that the council should be responsible for. And since we did not reappoint her, so now's the perfect time to rescind the whole thing. If in the future, town decides they want a new administrator, then they can vote for it.
It seems to me, oh, most of these items on here are, are items that can certainly be taken care of by this council.
Right. Right.
No, I mean, the one, microphone, as far as, you know, request, requesting information, you know, we don't have access to the computers, recording, and stuff like that. So that's where, it depends on the biggest issue I see.
But the committee gave you the authority to look at that stuff now, so we're really trying to rebuild what we have here for something that's new, friendly to the people and to us without the big fights like we had tonight just to start the meeting. None of that should be going on, that should be open, we should be able to sit here, adult and talk. There's no reason that we shouldn't.
Right.
And the town administrator position is just magically titled, it's not needed.
Okay. So what do you want to make a motion on?
I want to make a motion to go away with the administrator only.
The title?
And the two sixty-six and anything that was attached to a later after.
A second. Well, you've got to wait for your other person to come back.
You lost me, Frank. Say that, say that again. What do you want to do with it?
I want to do away with the administrator position. That's it, just the administrator position, nothing else. And two sixty-six and all the attachments that we don't know what's, you know.
That may have been voted on after this was printed up.
Right. We might never know what, but all the attachments. And then, we could, as a council, we could rewrite whatever we want.
If we decide on the town administrator.
For the time being, we're going to do away with the town administrator position.
We're going to do away with that.
And I checked with, at the M L A, make sure that there wasn't any conflict with her being on leave and us ending the position. There's not a conflict because it was on the agenda before she went on the leave.
Yeah, see, I had.
I checked federal and state, so.
We're here. We, we don't need this position because.
Yeah, we just.
The council doesn't have it all. We don't do nothing. We're just here a bunch of dummies. We have to be here to, we're here for the town.
Right. And this guy gave better control of me.
So, so just to clarify, we're going to do, we're requesting to do away with the admin position in the two sixty-six along with any attachments, any and all attachments that were, that came to it?
Added after, or voted on after.
We made the motion and did you get a second?
Angela, Angela's second.
Uh, did I?
I thought she did.
Quite creative scramble, sorry. We, but should we start over, or do we have?
Yeah, go ahead and make the motion.
Make the motion to, uh, to do away with the admin position and the two sixty-six along with any attachments that were made on after.
We had a motion.
Yeah, she's just.
Or it wasn't here.
Yeah.
I mean, is that something you need to ask the attorney on? Because it's an ordinance. I'm sorry?
No.
Is that something that needs to be talked to the attorney? Because it's an ordinance, is all I'm saying.
No.
I don't know without any.
No, I don't.
You know what you're talking about? No.
I don't see why we have to bring the attorney in every time we turn around.
No, 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 I'm just saying, can we just do it because it's an ordinance?
We can. We can, we can repeal any ordinance that's on the books.
You know what you're talking about.
You have to put an ordinance in place and regulations on it, but the board can decide to alter or repeal without the same regulation.
As long as it's legal.
What's that? So the.
Basically, repealing ordinance two sixty-six.
Yes. And any, um, ordinance. Resolution that was passed after that.
If Kay doesn't agree, I want to dead government for you.
Did you know that I'm moving out of town? You know where I live?
Maybe, anything.
Because there was ordinance is done after two sixty-six.
Well, maybe anything that pertained to two sixty-six. So anything that was voted on in a denum or, you know, revised or amended.
Exactly. Hey, Sam, I think we've had a motion and a second.
I'll second it, yes.
Okay, let's have a vote.
Ms. Adams?
Yes.
Mr. Rahas?
Yes.
Ms. Gellman?
Yeah.
Mr. Romero?
Yes.
Mr. Thornton?
Yes.
Okay, vacation time.
Vacation time, and the reason this is coming up again, this is the last time it's come up. On this vacation, we approved a leave for eight days, sixty-four hours for Tyra. She took, uh, she started with a hundred and sixty-nine hours. And whenever she subtracted, she left herself with a hundred and sixty-one hours. So she only took eight hours away for eight days. The conversation from, from there went to, Tyra said, well, I worked in the office the other seven days. Stephanie said five minutes later, but she worked from home the other seven days. You know, she, we gave her an eight-day vacation and she only subtracted eight hours.
It's seven sixty-four.
It's seven sixty-four.
And she was on a recording, then turning around, saying she couldn't accept agenda items due to the fact she was on vacation. So she's, in one sense, saying she's working, and the other sense, she's saying she wasn't working, so couldn't accept agenda items.
Therefore, the time clock. So I guess I make a motion, or would I have to, to make a motion to adjust the hours to a hundred and sixty-one, uh, subtracting the sixty-four hours?
Sarah, do you have any input into this?
I don't, I mean, basically, you're talking about an employee and, I don't know if you got it, I don't know if you can technically do that right away or does it have a process that, because of being an employee.
You witness any part of that or?
No, she, she worked. Yeah. She did.
Oh, then how did you, you said she filled this paper out, right? How did you know at the advance that on an eight-day vacation, she was only going to work eight hours?
I'm trying to remember. I remember somebody saying that they had filled out.
It was.
A, a, a form, but it was filled out incorrectly.
That was, that was the word, the hours versus days. That's the confusing thing to it. It's, it, that's not what my argument was. My argument was the arithmetic. She took eight days vacation, or we approved eight days.
Yeah, no, I understand that, but I'm just saying, I remember somebody saying that they had filled out, they had mistaken, or mis, filled it out incorrectly. They thought they were putting in the, the days and it should have been hours or something like that.
And, and that was just a mistake. That was a nothing thing to it. Had nothing to do with the actual hours taken. Because right now, we don't, you know, we approved eight days vacation, but we don't know what happened. You know, and so.
Well, that's something we can go back and look at. That would be on the agenda.
And I'd like to clarify something too. I know we keep calling Tyra an employee, but even as town clerk, isn't she an appointed official?
She is by the, by the town administrator, that's an appointed official.
So is a town clerk, that's what we focused on, was to reappoint her and not to.
I know at some point in the past, the town clerk was an elected.
An elected position.
Position.
Or a governor. That's elected. Right, but then we.
A town going on it. Okay? Not only the council, the whole town, it was, it was.
I agree. I agree, that's how it should be. Yes, sir.
That's the way it used to be. I don't know when the last time they voted for a town clerk.
But even, but with us appointing her, that still keeps her in a position of an appointed official.
Oh, absolutely, yeah.
So she wouldn't be under the employee rules that I would see.
Yeah, I don't know, so what, I guess what's the point, what's the, so if she's in an appointed position, so I guess where are you going with this?
Yeah.
Oh, I just want clarification, because it keeps coming up that we're going to have to do this a certain way because she's an employee. But I don't see her as being an employee, like the executive session to discuss things. She doesn't have the privileges that an employee has.
Because it's an appointed, an appointed position.
Right, and Donald made that real clear last time I was on council, of what they could say or do to someone who was in an office, appointed or voted. You know, there's definitely different rules on how you can talk or address things. If she's an employee, we got a different set of rules.
Versus whether she's appointed. So.
Yes.
She was definitely appointed, right? Okay, so, well, Monica and I will look into the vacation.
Do you need this? So as far as, as far as the realities of this time she's now taking on, where is that?
Well, that's how come we're asking for the papers, because if she's on F M L A, it's not a paid leave, and she can't use her vacation time or sick days on it, because the state pays ninety percent of her pay. So if she takes that, then she didn't double pay for her time off. That's how come the number of hours on vacation days became to where that I wanted to get settled, what happened here, because we approved eight, eight days. You know, and, and no one ever, no one ever come back to amend it or to even tell us what was going on. All of a sudden, we're being told, oh, no, all I took was eight hours. It just didn't make sense. So it, it depends on the leave papers. If she is indeed on F M L A, then, uh, she wouldn't get paid.
And I don't think, did we even settle the F M L A?
No, we still haven't.
You know? We don't even have that information.
And if we had that, it makes things clear, we know where we were at, but right now, we don't. And every request we made, because there is things that they could show us without violating the regulations. That form that I was telling you about, the federal and if it's state, the town would have got a PDF given the determination, three types of F M L A. It would have gave us the determination of it. And in some Tyra's emails that she's been answering, she says she's returning to work the twenty-seventh of this month.
Of July?
Hmm. That's in her email, she's returned for a court request. I was sent a copy of it. She's saying she's returning the twenty-seventh of July. So you know she's not at work, she's answering emails, just so you guys know.
Well, if she comes back to work, we have to have a document.
Well, you know.
That's a doctor released her.
That has to be up to the F M L A.
Well, the doctor gave her permission to come back to work.
But that's opening a whole other area.
Well, I mean, no.
Why she left, if she, if she's able, you know, why she left, what type of leave she's on. If it's a doctor, um, after three days, you have to have something already in place.
Why she left and that doesn't matter. As long as she come back and has the doctor's report that.
She's allowed to come back.
She was under his care. They were under his care and.
Yeah.
That's it.
But the point is, we don't have.
As long as it was.
Yeah, we don't even have that she's got the official F M L A.
Right.
So at which point, I mean, we could look at it that she has left the position. If that document is not produced.
Then she resigned.
Then she resigned.
Yeah.
I look at it the same way, you know, it's, there should be documentation that, and I spent half the day today with the state and the federal on this. And definitely, we should have got a notice through that law. Not going to say medical reasons, it's just going to say that they approved the F M L A. That's how she gets her pay started, kind of like social security.
Okay, so i- if that document exists, it will have the correct date on it. Because after three days, okay, so we, she's been out for weeks now, okay? So she can't go now and just get that approved now with it dated yesterday. Um, so, I mean, how do, how do we get that copy? Do we make a motion that, um, administration, or if she gave it to Donald, that they need to produce it by next Thursday?
Well, we wouldn't need Donald's here to answer that, because there would be two people on the account. When they set up the account for the family leave, there would have been two administrators on the account. One would have been Tyra, the other would have been Donald. They're the only ones that could get the information from them. Tyra would have to initiate the report on the state level to get it approved. We wouldn't approve the leave if the state were.
Or approve it, right.
Then that would start her pay. She would have to give them a doctor's statement. They would, in turn, send a PDF to us, uh, within forty-eight hours.
Okay, so we can almost say that, no, we, as, unless it went to her emails. Anyone checking her emails at this point?
Wouldn't a copy be in her file?
And your court request going to her email is on a timeline as well, guys. A potential lawsuit. You're not checking her email.
But if she's not working.
She's only have ten days.
But if she's not working, she should not even be checking those emails.
No, she shouldn't be, but somebody should.
It should be monitored.
It needs to be monitored.
Well, and somebody sent an email while she's been out on medical.
That was definitely while she was off when that was responded to. Somebody is in that account. I mean, accountant keys if she's not here, guys.
Okay, so Sarah, you're saying that you did not see that PDF from the state on FMLA when you were in her emails? Okay, so what were the other two options if it wasn't state PDF?
On federal, there would have been a form. Colorado Form three-three-eight-O-B, which would have been filed federally. And it also is a, a wage and hour department and there's no pay for that. Federal will send her to the state and the state will pay ninety percent of her pay up to eleven hundred dollars per week. And they'll send a PDF that's going to say, it'll give the FCIN employer number. It, it'll state if she's on continuing leave, intermittent leave or reduced scheduled leave. And then they'll send a second notice when they get notice from her doctor that she's released to come back to work.
Okay, but regardless whether it was the state or this federal of the continuing intermittent or whatever, there should be documentation somewhere if.
Definitely.
If it was filled out.
Yes.
So at this point in time, I'm saying it wasn't filled out because if it didn't go to her email and didn't go to anybody else's email, where is it?
Looks, I guess maybe Gerald Donald, I, I don't know even though it's legal to talk to her from what I heard the other day. Because we're not supposed to, not supposed to talk to her.
No, no, that's fine. We don't, we don't need to talk to her to determine whether that document's on file.
Another thing because Tyra was up here just when I called you with Sarah, not just a few days ago.
Last week.
Well, that's personal and that's.
No contact means no contact.
And no contact's no contact.
I was on FMLA and I was playing around.
When did I not?
What thing was it about?
Gerald, not Gerald, Robbie's the one who told me. I'm just going by hearsay.
She came up here and.
She's never been up here. She hasn't been up here since she's been gone.
Not that I've seen. So I have not, I, I only, I have not.
I really don't think that's, it's really here or there again. I'd agree. That's a personal thing. If she wants to go to lunch with Tyra, she can go to lunch with Tyra as long as Tyra's not in here in the office conducting business. That's got nothing to do with.
But you're looking at legalities. No contact means no contact. I mean.
Well, that, I think that means we can't contact her.
Or her not.
Yes, both ways.
It works both ways. So she can't contact any, any of her fellow employees, including deputy clerk.
Okay, yes.
Well, I mean, we can't really.
That's how likely. We don't know.
Okay. Well, you know, again, we can't really prove that one way or the other, but I mean, at this point in time, the way I see it, this, these documents don't exist and she's abandoned her post. She's abandoned her job.
Okay, we're gonna hold on.
No, I think we need to determine what we're going to do about that.
We got to, got to have time limit to produce documents, I would think, but.
And so if the document doesn't have, you know, I mean, okay, so let's say the document's produced by next, the week, the meeting next Thursday, but it's got a date of this week on it or dated tomorrow.
Then it's been faked.
That, well, if it's not been faked, it means that it wasn't, she did abandon her job because after three days, but I don't know how that works, appointed versus, versus employee. If she's in an appointed position and does that same three day rule kind of apply than it does to an employee.
If she's appointed. A document created by who?
FMLA, the state.
The state wage and hour division. They have to create that so that they pay her ninety percent of her pay.
And it should have been produced to the board as soon as it was filed.
Yes.
And it wasn't.
Yeah, it should have been presented and then we get documentation from the state forty-eight hours later. Which as far as I know, Donald would be the only one who would possibly have the access here. Unless Gerald would, and I, I imagine he doesn't have that.
Okay, so I, I think we need to put something in motion here, um, that we need to see that paperwork to make a final decision on, on her employment at this point. Because if she did not fill out this paperwork, she, she basically resigned. If she can produce the paperwork, then we move forward.
I agree.
Well, how do I, how do I make a motion on that? How do I?
Well, if, if she is indeed on leave, we can contact her. So I.
But well, Donald, you know, it, it, he's the one that knew that she went on leave. So wouldn't it be his responsibility to have collected that paperwork?
Yes.
Okay, so then I, I guess I'll make a motion that Donald needs to produce that paperwork by, um, what's our next meeting? The twenty-fifth.
Can I approach him?
Yes.
Ms. Adams?
Yes.
Mr. Bravo?
Yes.
Ms. Gelman?
Yes.
Mr. Ramirez?
Yes.
Mr. Twain?
Yes.
Audit.
Okay. Audit.
You're up, Angie.
I, uh, spent several hours last week speaking to Crystal Dorsey, uh, Jimmy, oh, what's his last name? Jimmy Ray, Jimmy, Jimmy John, what's his name? Anyway, um, so those first two phone calls, Crystal Dorsey, um, she stated that as far as she knew, twenty nineteen and twenty twenty audits had not been completed. And that as the board, um, we have every right to call and check up on the status of these audits.
There was nothing I would talk to.
Crystal Dorsey, she's with the state audit department. Okay, so she's kind of the head of the audit department. So then she gave me, um, James Ray, Jimmy Ray's phone number, who's actually overseeing our audits. And he told me that twenty nineteen and twenty twenty, there were initial drafts completed, but the audits themselves are not completed because during the process that Priska, who was contracted by Robert Half to compile the information for us, um, went back further because the opening balance for twenty nineteen didn't match the closing balances for twenty eighteen. So she got some initial drafts done, but once she had to go back and look at those opening balances, she realized that in twenty eighteen, there was an adjusting journal entry for over four hundred thousand dollars. And in twenty nineteen, an adjusting entry for over five hundred thousand dollars to try to get, um, the books to balance. Okay? Now, um, that was, you know, kind of the gist of it with, with Jimmy Ray. And so I was able to get Priska's information because I had asked Sarah for Priska's, uh, contact information and she could not produce it. So I was able to get Priska, um, who was contracted by Robert Half and I called and spoke with her. And she confirmed those that yes, she's had some initial drafts done, but once she went back further, it was blamed on a gentleman by the name of Travis that he had made these adjusting entries, which could have caused, you know, these negatives that we're seeing on the balance sheet and everything that I've, uh, pointed out in previous meetings. And I said, okay, um, however, if he's making, you know, these kinds of, you know, the tune of almost a million dollars adjusting entries to try to balance in the previous years, twenty fifteen, twenty sixteen, twenty seventeen, that means the financials must have been, uh, pretty inaccurate or whatever to try to get it to balance to make those kinds of adjusting entries. So then we talked further and she said that, um, I asked her how much longer it's going to take her, does she think, to finish up the current, um, ones that are due? And she said it's probably going to be another two to three months. But she was in agreement with me when I suggested that I think that we need to actually rebuild, go in and have somebody completely rebuild these files. She said the current software, uh, that we're using assists, I don't know it very well, but she says it's very antiquated and it's an old system. And you can't even run a P and L on this because I was asking for profit and loss statements and she's like, you can't even run it. You have to build it out of there. And so I asked her if, if QuickBooks would be a better way to go or Sage and she said both of those would be great, which I am also a QuickBooks pro advisor, certified pro advisor. Um, and she said she feels that a lot of what we're seeing on these current, um, you know, these negatives in the checking accounts and on the accounts payable, some of that will probably be fixed once she can clean up, uh, some of those adjusting entries that were made in the tune of a million dollars. But she also feels that additional cleanup will need to be made, um, in-house. And so my thoughts on this is that she's only got two drafts done for twenty nineteen and twenty twenty. And I've seen that we've paid over thirty-five thousand dollars just to get those two drafts done. And I don't know if there's been additional amounts paid. Um, I only saw, I think April and May, I saw these checks. So I mean, we're talking about, you know, a hundred thousand, two hundred thousand dollars, um, just to get audits done and that's not even additional cleanup after that. And I really question whether this Priska gal is the right person. Because she did say that, you know, she could recommend and, and help us bring somebody, uh, in-house to do that cleanup. But I'm really questioning what she's even billing at this point because to complete two years, it's cost us thirty-five thousand dollars. Um, that seems really excessive to me. I've been a bookkeeper for thirty-five years. I've done numerous projects of catch-up cleanup and it's ran nowhere near that.
So more than three, five thousand?
Yeah, so I mean, you know, I mean, we're talking about, you know, paying her to finish doing these audits. So I think these audits are probably going to end up running us a hundred thousand dollars and then have to hire somebody else to come in and clean it up and maybe do, you know, file transfers, move it over if we want to get the updated, you know, software like QuickBooks, which is extremely user friendly. Um, you know, just clean wonderful reports. It's, you know, accounts payable, accounts receivable. You can, uh, track by project, by class, you know, it's just a really good way to go. Um, she also suggested Sage, which I don't know a whole lot about, but I've heard good things about Sage as well. But if we're talking about doing that and then doing that on top of that, and I asked her how long she thought that would take the additional cleanup, and she said probably about six months. Yeah, so yeah, we're talking, we're talking at least till the end of the year and we're talking probably, you know, if we go that direction with her, keeping her on the audits and then having her help us bring somebody in, I mean, we're definitely looking at a couple hundred thousand dollars to get these finances cleaned up. So what I'm thinking is that I think a- at this point in time, we need to have her turn over to us everything that she's done. And I think Monica and I need to search for somebody to just bring somebody in-house.
Angelina? My daughter works for the state up there.
Mm-hmm.
And she gave me a name.
Mm-hmm.
They recommended him very highly.
Okay.
Pablo.
Okay.
He's retired.
Okay.
And she said, get this guy.
Mm-hmm.
He is good.
Okay.
And the only one better than him is his wife, which she's working.
Okay.
So, but I turned, I gave, this is part of us, the paper, the, the man's name and everything.
Okay.
But then they went with this other guy. But this man, I think maybe I'll give you.
Okay.
His.
Okay.
Name and that add and you talk to him, okay?
Okay.
He, but he, uh, my daughter says that this guy is good.
Okay.
That he doesn't, he'll uncover anything.
Okay.
So.
Because I mean, it, you, you gotta look at, I mean, because any set of books can be cleaned up, but at what cost? So you gotta look at what, what's going to be more cost effective, you know, going back all these years and trying to do, you know, this, this cleanup and trying to figure out what the heck happened? Or do we just completely rebuild the files and start from scratch?
Now, is, we're insured and bonded through SARS. So would we not be able to be insured against the loss of money that it looks like we're facing?
I don't know anything about that. That's, I mean, that's something I guess we would have to look into. I don't know. It's.
Sarah, do you have that guy's number, name anymore?
Did they get it to Paterson?
Was it Patterson? It was Joe Patterson? He's retired.
Okay, yeah. Oh, get, get that to me and Monica and we'll get to that for sure. Um, do you? Okay, so.
Gerald, would you be able to find out if the town's bonded against losses like this?
Sure we can dig that up in some ways.
It would, it would be through SARS.
Yeah, I think we need to look at it because we're looking at, I mean, because these books are so bad and so, you know, even let's say that, you know, this Travis who was handling this before.
Isn't Travis, I think, is Travis the guy that left the state or left the country or something?
Working out of his garage?
Okay, so yeah, so let, let's just say, you know, hypothetically, you know, he caused a lot of these issues that we're seeing. Okay, fine, that's okay. Where the failure comes in is that the current, uh, administration has left the books in this condition and has not done anything to, uh, correct it and request help if they didn't know how to take care of it or correct it. And it's continued to get worse and worse and worse. You know, we're talking over five years. So, um, yeah, I think we need, if there's any way that we can get covered, um, on that, I think that would really be a good thing.
I do know that the town hired someone to be a moderator to format the information that the town was finishing the audit. So they're paying somebody to do that work.
Yeah, that's Priska and she was hired by, yeah, she was hired by Robert Half. And Robert Half is a temp agency that, um, pretty much focuses on financials and they're very expensive, you know, so I mean, they, again, I, I want to see how much total we've paid them. I've only seen the last two months, which totals thirty-five thousand dollars. So I don't know when Priska actually started this work, so if there was another check cut in March or, you know, February, you know. Yeah, I want to see all of that information as well. Yeah, we have nothing, yeah, thirty-five thousand dollars and we have nothing to show for it at this point.
Now, the state is owing over a hundred thousand dollars.
Yeah, uh, that was the other thing. Crystal Dorsey said she confirmed, you know, that the hundred and twenty thousand was held in the, um, property taxes for, through the end of twenty twenty-three. However, you know, the collection for twenty twenty-three taxes happened, you know, in spring of twenty twenty-four. So there's more money, you know, that's owed to us for the twenty twenty-four collection from the prior fiscal year.
It's just under two hundred thousand right now.
Okay, so then the next thing that was also suggested, what I, which I've been trying to get. Sarah, were you able to pull together all of the bank statements and the reconciliation reports that I've requested?
Yeah, I can watch. I've been trying to get the ballots and everything then for the election, but I'll do that.
Okay, well, we need, we need that as soon as possible because we don't know how much the town. Okay, well, we need, we need that as soon as possible, because we don't know how much the town has, and we can't determine that based upon the financial reports that have been provided. So the only way that we know how much money this town has is getting, I want April, May, and June. I want all of the checking accounts, I want the bank statements, and reconciliation reports. For bank statements, loans, the charge account, any savings accounts, basically any, any accounts where money is flowing through, moving in and out of. We need property of the bank statements for the three months. So for quarter two, April, May, and June, with reconciliation reports, please.
Committee candidate.
Well, I mean, I don't, you know, I don't know where anything is in the office. I don't know, you know, the system. She at least knows how to get into the system. That's something that, you know, that, again, I agree that Monica and I can meet, come in and meet with Sarah, you know, to grab that information. But that's got to be done ASAP. We need that. So we know exactly what's in our accounts, what money we have to spend. And then also, I think, looking into suit, into see, you know, due to, you know, failure of, of financial management and transparency of, you know, the state that these books are in. See if we're covered for that.
Any other?
Pleasant news? Pleasant news?
Time for German? Yeah, I think so. I think that's, I think we covered a lot there. Motion, we?
Motion.
Motion, good, Gerald.
Is that good?
Monica first.
Thank you.
Eight oh six.
Yes.
Like to apologize for calling you all toddlers. You handled yourself well. Obviously, the toddler left the room. Thank you, guys.
We're so glad. Yes. Ms. Adams?
Yes.
Mr. Robos?
Yes.
Ms. Gelman?
Yes.
Mr. Romero?
Yes.
Mr. Sarn?
Yes.
I want to thank the council for sticking together.
That's right. Thanks for stepping up, Gerald.
I want to thank everybody that's calling me.
What you do, Gerald?
Gerald. Next, you talk to that lawyer real nice, now.
Kim, ready for a late stretch.
Yeah, I'm really worried about things.